Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February 6, 2020 city council meeting. Some horrible flooding today in southern West Virginia, McDowell County, and some of the other areas down there around Logan and Welch. Just horrible stuff. So let's keep those people in our best thoughts, wishes, and prayers. Also, since the last council meeting, we lost one of our own. Wes Brown, who was one of our Streets and Parks workers, died on January 21 of 2020. Wes was only 40 years old. In addition to working in our Streets and Parks area, Wes was a very talented welder and had many other excellent skills. He was one of the best chess players in Upstate County. He was a veteran of the United States Army, and he had a smile that lit up the room. So I'd ask that you join us all in the remembrance of one of our own, Wes Brown. Thank you very much. Steve Odecker is back there. I thought I saw Robert Dill, but I don't see him right now. Would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, Steve?
I plead the allegiance and reply of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we didn't have any guests who asked to be placed on the agenda, but we have a couple of folks who have signed in to address council. And they include Sandra Bennett, Alyssa Mills, and Denise Weaver. And I think you all want to talk about Ordinance 441. Did you want to address council now? Or do you want to wait until we take that up here in a few minutes? When we take it up in a few minutes, we'll let you weigh in.
Let our guests go Thursday. It's up to them.
Okay, well, we'll just, it's, we got a pretty, I think we can run through this stuff pretty quickly tonight. We do have some college students tonight. So the drill is, is you usually rise and face the camera so that everybody in TV land can see you, and give us your name and your hometown and your major course of study at the college.
My name is Ryan Bixby, and I am from Winchester, Virginia, and I am studying marketing at West Virginia Wesleyan.
Hi, TV land. My name is Shani Johovis. I'm from Buchanan, West Virginia, and I'm studying business administration at West Virginia Wesleyan College.
We were supposed to have five or six folks here. I think some of them must have claimed the flu bug or something like that. One student told me he wasn't feeling well, so.
Claimed that he.
Yeah.
They probably got it from you, David.
Tammy Rigger is here. She just gave us these intriguing floral decorated cards. And there's going to be a big event out at the Event Center on March 2. Do you want to tell us a little bit about that, Tammy?
Yeah, the Chamber Annual Dinner will be held on March 2 at the Event Center at Brushy Fork. Dinner will be by the Opera House. And we have secure our speaker. It's going to be Kimberly Reed. She is the president and chairman of the Export-Import Bank for the United States. I got the chance to hear her speak at the State Chambers Business Summit. And a lot of what she spoke on was a video that she had prepared regarding service and giving back to the community. And with her, she has a great love for 4H. She grew up in the 4H program on Tallmanville Road. She grew up here. So we've asked her to speak on that. Service, giving back to the community, and that. So it's March 2, 6:00 p.m., the Event Center.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday. We have individual tickets and sponsorships available, and we're looking for silent auction items. And then also, on the following Monday, March 9, at the Performing Arts Center at West Virginia Wesleyan College, the Chamber will partner with MyBuchanan to host a candidates night for City of Buchanan and Board of Education candidates. And that will be at 7:00 p.m. Okay?
There you have it. Thank you very much. Okay, let's get into our Department Board reports. Callie Crowne and Sam's had a long drive today from a conference, and she has to beg off this evening. Her report is in your packet, council. And I don't know if I'll be hitting the highlights correctly or not, but she's got information about the Buchanan Volunteer Center, Buchanan Physical Activity Transportation Hub Path Project, the REAC recycling fourth quarter report, other upcoming events, the Create Buchanan's Elimination Dinner on Valentine's Day, is that right?
That's right.
February 14. On Sunday, February 16, we will celebrate Black History Month with the reading of the 82 sentences that comprise Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech. That's at 1 o'clock at Jawbone Park. February 17 is President's Day. And looking ahead to March 6, that's Black Balloon Day, where we remember the folks who've been lost to the drug epidemic. But also, it's a day to lift up those who are battling addiction and supporting those folks as well. So you can look at all of the hits and misses on our website in Callie's packet that's in your package. Okay, next up is Deborah Brockelman with our Stockard Youth and Community Center. Deborah, are all those K through 12-year-old monks over there doing well?
Yes, with a little bit of an illness.
Flu has been everywhere, huh?
But it is really busy, as usual. Drill team started practices back tonight. They're going to be recruiting for the whole month so that kids can still sign up. After-school and tutoring going very well. We have about 58 kids daily. We've had a health inspection, which went very well. We also had a visit from our Child Nutrition Program Coordinator, and that went very well. And that is for our after-school healthy snack program that we get reimbursement for. The building continues to be very busy. We have birthday parties every weekend, several meetings a week, and the PALS program that is currently there at their classroom. It's very busy, a lot of kids in that program as well. Basketball is going very well. We're back in full swing. However, we still continue to have to adjust our scheduling because the gym time availability is crazy. We were scheduled for a basketball recognition night tomorrow night during the Lewis County Buchanan Upsher game with coaches and kids and the whole big thing that we do at least once a year. However, it's been postponed, and I'm getting that it's from illness. So Lewis County canceled. And apparently, they have a lot more illness over there than we do.
Take advantage of all the schools. About six counties around this.
Yeah. So right now, it's rescheduled for the 26th. Also, last Saturday, during our basketball game, we had a generous donation from a grandparent of one of our players, well, actually, two of our players. And he is also one of our basketball coaches, and he gave us a $1,000 donation. And it's Steve and Callie Colette. They're great people. They helped me on walk, and they're coaching this year. So it's all good. Also, we're planning a bingo fundraiser. The date for that is March 29, and we will have it at the Moose Club. Doors will open at 12, and bingo will begin at 1. The cost is $25 for 20 games plus the coverall. If anybody's interested. Also, continue to look at different software programs for SYC. Most of programs are, or all of them are cloud-based programs. And they would offer training, and online or in-person training for us. And we're still looking to get new software for the youth center with our billing and programs. And last but not least, for January 2020, our youth involvement hours were 13,490.
That's terrific, Deborah. If you'll give me the address of the college. I meant to ask you about the end of the day.
Yes, I'll get it.
Board meeting, I can send them a thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for Deborah? Amen. You agree. Okay, next up is our Public Works Director, Jerry Arnold. Mr. Arnold?
Good evening. How's it going? Very good. How are you? Okay. Been working on, this is just some of the projects I've been working on along with working with the crew in the theater. Employee valuations, set up the employee satisfaction survey, which we do back in next Tuesday. And I've been working on some language for the waste collection card, 96-count card exemption policy. Water department's installing new service on Eagle Street, replacing a valve at Park and Kamala Streets. And they completed the supply of water plumbing in the theater for the restaurants. Sewer department, Crew 1 continues to work on the CJ Martin Line Extension. They did get that work completed. And Crew 2 is working on answering calls and as well as working in the theater some time of time on the restroom part. The maintenance crew is routinely maintenance social plan. The street department, we're still in the theater and still working on my walk with the permits. Engineering, just a couple of things. Jay's working on the Gateway West Phase 2 construction, the light bid package for Gateway West, which is west of Route 21. I'm in Street.
We got to be clear about that.
But anyhow, the water department early warning monitoring system. Just announced that Jay received notification from the West Virginia DHHR last week that the grant was approved. And it'll be filing the necessary paperwork, the grant documents, preparing the bid package heads for the vote. The water department was seeking to service these early warning monitoring systems that they're installing in the river. Again, that was pretty good news to hear that everyone would come back for us. Paul, I have a question.
Questions for Mr. Arnold?
Yeah, I have one. Have you come up with the exemption policy yet? Or are you still working on that?
We're working on it.
Okay.
Waste Board approved the concept. And I'm going to be reviewing what was presented this evening, Tom O'Neill. And then next meeting, there'll be a vote on how it's implemented. But we're going to go ahead and start taking requests.
Other questions? Tell all the guys, we appreciate them. The elements are challenging this time of year, but we're still pushing projects.
Thank you.
Next up is Ambi Jenkins, our Director of Finance and Administration.
Amy?
How's it going, Ambi?
I'm going to give you your balances for the end of January. General Fund Money Market and Checking, 830,222. Historic Landmark Savings, $3,023. We have the savings for the fire truck. I just kind of, another update on that you already know about. Need to remind you, 38,210. The Stockard Youth Center Capital Campaign, 336,495. That includes the $12,000 pledge we have. Municipal Stabilization Fund, 513,697. Coal Tax Fund, 64,767. Flood Control Project, 9,379. We, like Deborah said, we received a donation from the Colette family for $1,000 for the Stockard Youth Center Capital Campaign. We also received $2,000 from the Band of Witches. And then we also received $100 from Zool. So that was for January and the first part of February donations. The Colonial Theater received a donation from Buchanan Community Theater in the amount of $1,000. In voices worth noting in your packet, we expensed $2,580 for emergency reporting software for the fire department. We expensed $15,000 to the Upsher County Development Authority. That's the council's contribution to it, second half. Region 7 and Planning, Region 7 Planning and Development, we expensed $2,973 for GIS services from it. I'm working on financing for a waste collection department closed top trailer. And then we have some emergency repairs to the scales at the transfer station that Jerry submitted at last meeting. And those expenses were $10,300. Your expenses for general fund for the month of January were 373,780, and your revenues were 333,900. And then we are, of course, working on budget preparations. And I was still working on some mandatory HR reporting. And we're a little shorthanded from sick, had sicknesses, and people often leave, but we're getting there.
Anything else jump out at you, Ambi, that we need to know about unusual or exaggerated expenses?
Just those ones I noted to you about the Development Authority, the GIS mapping and the software that we expensed.
Council questions for Mrs. Jenkins? If not, I would entertain a motion that we approve our January 2020 financials. I have a motion by Mrs. Albaugh. May I have a second to her motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Skinner. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Thanks, Ambi. And thanks to the gals out front. It's terrific city hall staff. Chief Kimball, how's it going down at the Public Safety Council?
It's a somber crowd tonight, eh?
We're moving right on, David.
Wow, yeah. In your packet is end-of-year activity. I told you last month we'd have that. If you go good, of course, the responses were there at last meeting. But if you look back in, if you have to take time to look at the training, we had 3,300 hours, over 3,300 hours of training recorded. And also, when you get to the station coverage time, there was 22,400 hours of volunteer station coverage time, which means volunteer members come and spend time at the firehouse and blocks to add to staffing, either doing special events or just to come down and do some training. So look over that. It's interesting. It also has each individual's activity, how many calls they responded to, how many hours they put in. So that's there. Also, we just recently went through EMS licensure. Traditionally, we have been under Upsher County EMS's umbrella for licensure, which means we had to record all our training with them. We had to do everything under their authority, basically. With our training mechanism we have in place, it was a lot easier for us to record and retain the training of our members among ourselves. So we are considered a rapid-response licensed agency now, which means we don't have a transport ambulance. We just assist them on emergency medical calls in the city limits automatically and outside the city limits in our first due upon request. We do have a new mutual aid agreement that has been written up. City attorney's looking over it to make sure it's kosher before we have EMS and us sit down and talk about it. So that's where we're at on that. This will be the first time that's ever happened in the fire department's history, that we are on our own, under our own licensure of that.
You said on request. Is that by the 911 dispatcher? How do you get requested?
By the EMS agency. So if they're responding to a cardiac arrest, 3,000 block of Brushy Fork, that's outside the city limits, they can say, go ahead and have Buchanan Fire, or have the fire department respond, and we are dispatched.
Depending on whether they're engaged in something else.
Yes. And if they're busy, and it's a call that they can't get to immediately, they can also request us. That's one of the things. Like, if we were to respond on all medical calls outside the city limits in our first due, like we do in the city, it's over 1,000 calls a year, probably. So it's just, we, at this point, this is where we're at. We had an accreditation meeting. I think it went fairly well. I think Ambi, she had several questions to see where we're at. It is a slow process, you know? Especially when you involve as many entities as Chief Gregory and I have to get with and get on board with. And, you know, the timelines for that sometimes gets extended. But we're rolling along now. We're also looking at possibly having one of the classes here. And if we do, it would be really nice if some of city councilor, you know, would attend that. That way, you all understand what we're going to do, too. So we are setting up CPR first-day classes for all city employees. And I would encourage city council and the mayor to also take that class. The last time, we offered it all but three or four employees. So 80-some employees took that class. It's a two-year certificate. So we do that at the fire department. And we'll have classes in the morning meeting. Try to make it convenient for everybody.
Do you have dates yet? I'm sorry, Chief.
No, we don't. I have to get together, all the paid staff are instructors. And then we have six or seven volunteers that are instructors, too. So I'd like to involve them also. Because you have to teach so many classes to keep your teaching certificate, so.
Sure.
I've passed on my requested budget to Ambi. You know, of course, there's some truck stuff in there that's not in place yet. We are having a meeting, and I've asked Ambi to attend it Wednesday with some truck companies. And it's going to be here next Wednesday. So that way, you know, it gets everybody on board. We can look and make sure we got everything we're looking at and stuff like that. So Safe for Grant is coming up again. I've spoke to Callie. I know it's not on the agenda to vote on tonight, but the deadline is March 13. I'd like to see if council would at least give us approval to go ahead and apply for it. That way, we can go ahead and get the application in, and then we can go from there. So I've asked Teresa to make sure it's on the agenda, strategic agenda for next council meeting, so. The Strawberry Festival, we starting our meetings with the Strawberry Festival next week, Chief Gregory and I and EMS Services. Basically, we start now. So we have all our ducks in a row before Strawberry Festival for emergency response. We've been doing this for a couple of years. Eventually, it gets to the point where you just meet, and everything's in place, and you take care of a few incidents, and it's ready to go. So we hope that's, it's getting smoother every year. It works well, so. One last thing. Since my last council meeting, Chief Larry Mackey has passed away. That was a big event for us. He was chief after Bud Bennett was. He was my chief whenever I started. A very respected person, both in the fire service and in the military, and as just a drill person. And he will be missed, so.
Absolutely. We recognize him at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Glad you're remembering where he ended in. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm not trying to evoke any controversy, but during our accreditation meeting, you divulge to the members of us that serve on that committee that at some point recently, our first due area had been modified unbeknownst to the city by the county commission. And that had been sent down to the state fire marshal's office, and a substantial part of what had long been Buchanan's first due area had been reduced.
Yes.
What, where does that stand insofar as us being heard on that matter?
We, what I've done, it's happened before our meeting, the gentleman from the state fire marshal's office. I've approached the state fire marshal's office about some changes that we are asking for in our district. Nothing's beyond, you know, right now, at this point in time, really over the five miles that our ISO covers. Just to give you an example, at the bottom of Teets Hill where Audrey's restaurant used to be, that is Warren District, fire department's district. So, and all the way out, if you go five miles out the Hall Road, it goes past, just past the Macedonia Road. That is also Warren District. River Road, parts of Children's Run, Upper Children's Run is Warren District. They basically have to come through our district to get there. There's some, up around Beatty Ridge, that Station Kevin Huffman, Chief Huffman from Station 2, and I've discussed. There's some modifications there, but we have to go through the process and get everybody on board because if we don't get everybody on board, then the fire marshal has to come in, pull data, make the adjustments on his recommendations. So we're at the point where Station 2 has agreed with the modifications that we've asked. You know, Warren District has a new fire chief as of January 1. So I will be approaching him to discuss those areas, too.
Sure. Would I be correct in saying, JB, that the singular motive on the part of the city of Buchanan is to provide the most expeditious emergency services that we can to the folks in the Buchanan Upsher community?
Yes.
There's no other incentive for?
I'll give you an example. Some of these areas that I've just discussed, because they're in other fire districts, but within our five miles, if they were in our first due, they would have cheaper insurance rates. So, you know, just some of those areas I just spoke about.
I've heard that a lot lately.
Any, I'm sure the council, any of us that can assist you in this effort, just say.
We're trying to get everybody. I don't want to have to have the state fire marshal's office come in because that creates work for everybody. If we can all just, you know, be grown-ups and figure it out on our own and adjust the things, and then just have them come in and adjust the map that goes before the fire commission, and it's adjusted. It's when you get into, you know, that's my line, not yours. That's when you have issues.
You were probably looking for something else to do anyway, right?
Yeah.
Is that it? Any questions for Chief Council? Tell the guys to.
Thanks to be safe. Thank you.
City Attorney Tom O'Neill. How's everything in Charleston? You got them all straightened out down there?
Like a pretzel. And not the, not the straight pretzel. So I've, just about everything under strategic, I have, I can discuss with you. Aside from questions you may have, I just defer my comments to that portion of the agenda.
Any generalized questions? We're going to bring you back up there in the会议室. Thanks, Tom. We'll see you here in a couple. Correspondence and information. You've got a whole bunch of stuff in your packet. There's the monthly report of cat and dog activities from the Upsher County Commission for December 2019. There's the city election certification of candidates and the official levy ballot for the Charles Gibson Memorial Public Library. There is a notice of a special city council working session regarding our 2020-2021 fiscal year budget. Now, that's on February 25 at 9:00 a.m. There's a letter to the Upsher County Commission to acknowledge the Buchanan Fire Department as a Licensed Emergency Medical Services Rapid Response Agency. There's the petition to the city of Buchanan with the West Virginia Public Service Commission regarding the Upsher County Commission's boundary expansion of service for the Tenerton Public Service District. We all know that we have opposed the action taken by the county commission. D6 is a letter to the History and Culture Center folks seeking our fourth grant application for the Colonial Theater. The form that we sometimes forget about for utility board gifts. Remember, you can give a buck a month, or five bucks a month, or 10 bucks a month to the Stockard Youth Center, to the Colonial Theater, to the Flower Program. There's a host of things that you can help us. The dog park. So anyway, yeah, Alyssa's quick to throw in the dog park. I almost forgot. So take a peek at that. We're going to send a mass mailing out with some of our other utility stuff soon in hopes of getting some more people on board with gifting things so that we can realize these projects even sooner than what we are. There's a letter from the Strawberry Festival that we're going to take up in just a couple of minutes relative to Ordinance 441. And there's a letter from Southern Lake, Altice, regarding new changes to video rates for commercial customers only. So the residential customers, we pleased to know that they're not getting an increase with this latest. The consent agenda consists of three items that I'll solicit your approval of by motion. Those three matters are the approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting on January 16, the approval of our building and wiring permits, and the approval of the payment of the general fund bills. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda.
So, really?
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. I have a second to his motion. Mrs. Albaugh has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign motion carries. Takes us down to strategic issues. Must be a ballgame on or something.
Yeah.
First matter is Ordinance 441. On second reading, Mr. O'Neill, can we? First matter is ordinance 441 on second reading. Mr. O'Neill, can we bring you back up to read by Captain Forrest, ordinance 441?
Thank you. Council has the order, ordinance number 441, of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance prohibiting the offering or acceptance of live animals as prizes or inducements in carnival games operating within the corporate limits of the city and setting an effective date. This is the second of two reads.
No changes made between this and the last draft.
No.
If this were to be adopted by council tonight, this ordinance could be effectuated on March 7th of 2020. Let's get it on the table, and then we'll hear from our guests who have signed up to address council concerning it. I'd entertain a motion that we approve on second reading, ordinance 441, the city of Buchanan.
So, move.
I have a motion by Mr. Sanders. Can I have a second to his motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Albaugh. Now let us have our discussion. If the council is fine with it, we can hear from our guests first. Are you okay with that, council?
Yep.
So the first person signed up to attend is Sandra Bennett, our current president of the West Virginia Strawberry Festival. Sandra, how's it going?
Oh, it's going. It'll be here in 12 weeks.
Yeah, how about that?
Wow.
I guess I get to ride.
12 weeks, that sounds like a short amount of time.
I get to ride a horse this year or something.
Oh, so you're gonna, you're gonna be right up there.
Yeah, I need a cowboy hat.
Do you know how to ride a horse?
I haven't been on a horse in a while.
We wrote a letter as of the board of the strawberry festival, because when the ordinance came out, we knew nothing about it. We had not been, you know, not been introduced. I also contacted Shane with Gamble's Amusement, which they did not know anything about it either. We, both of us felt like if we would have been asked to come as a group, as three groups, the city and us, and the carnival would meet, we could probably solve the problem without having to go through another ordinance for the city of Buchanan. We, our biggest complaint we heard during festival week was, of course, was the iguanas. We had nothing about the other animals. And then when it was reported, it was said that, you know, everything, made it look like it was everything to do with the strawberry festival and the carnival. But then if you have other groups in town that do things, that give away prizes, I think it should, that wording, we think that wording should be changed, that it wouldn't be any group within the city giving animals away its prizes, if that's what you so desire. We just thought the wording was kind of just centrally the two groups, that was the only ones you were, and carnivals and schools and stuff do the same things. So that was our main concern on the ordinance that you all were considering.
Let me, let me say a couple of things. First, you know, there isn't a person on this council that in many instances, decades of service to the strawberry festival. I think I was on the board for about 10 years back in the 80s and 90s, and also served as general counsel for the strawberry festival pro bono for probably 20 years, and you guys never got a bill from me. There's no doubt that we all support the strawberry festival. There is no reference to the strawberry festival in this ordinance. There is no reference to gamble amusements in this ordinance. I had two separate meetings with, I talked with Shane again today. Shane's a close friend of mine. His family and my family go way back. And I said, I understand that you told somebody you didn't know anything about the ordinance. He said, no, I didn't say that. I said, because last July, we had a meeting about this. He said, that's right. And then I said, when we had our Fall Fest get together in September, we had a meeting about that. He said, that's right. And he said, what did I tell you? I said, I said, you told me you really weren't a fan of the ordinance, that you wanted that vendor to be able to continue to give away. He said, that's right. And what did I tell you? He said, well, you were still looking after the little animals and that kind of stuff. And so what's the bottom line, Shane? He said, I'll do whatever we need to do to comply with whatever ordinance you guys adopt.
Well, I, when I talked to him, he didn't, you know, and that was my discussion with him. And also, you know, and the only thing was because when it came out in print, and when it came out on TV, it was nothing but the strawberry festival and the gamble amusement. But that was, you know, the two groups that everything, everybody kept pointing everything to. And I think in the ordinance, it says carnival. Does it not say just carnival?
No.
It says carnival.
It says any, it says no person may offer, well, this is what it says. No person may offer or accept, and no person is, no organization, no individual, regardless of who they are. No person may offer or accept any live animal, reptile, fowl, livestock, and so on, as a prize for, or as an inducement to enter any contest, game, or other competition, or as an inducement to enter a place of amusement, or as an incentive to enter any business agreement where there is an offer, whereby the offer is for the purpose of attracting trade, or as a promotion for a commercial purpose. So this does not just apply to carnivals or to the festival. It applies, it would apply to any business.
I'm sorry, but that was kind of what was up in all the news, you know. So, and that was our only thing. But, you know, we felt like, you know.
Let me, let me mention.
And I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem, you know what I'm saying. I just thought the, you know, the wording and that, you know, we had not been aware of it.
Shane thinks that the position taken is a little, you know, exaggerated. He told me that when these fish come in, they come in in lots of 500. And that the box that the fish come in, it's like in a refrigerated unit to keep them cool and the whole bit. That, he says, guess what, guess what these fish are called? And I said, I assume they're called goldfish. He said, no, they're called feeder fish. That these small fish are taken to like big aquariums and things and are used as food for the old saying, big fish eat little fish. So that was news to me. And he said, so, so do people feel better about, you know, the little fish being consumed by big fish rather than, and what prompted this were a number of reports that came back during the past festival, which probably happened forever. There were some young people that were observed. After they won a goldfish, they would smash the bag onto the pavement. And apparently, they did some similar things with the hermit crabs and the miniature turtles and things like that. I was, it was one evening when I was walking through the promenade, the carnival stuff, and one of the VIPs, actually, two of the VIPs folks came up. And I had just gone past some kids. I thought they had water balloons, and that they were just having fun with throwing water balloons. And the VIPs people said, do you see what those kids are doing? I said, oh, they're just having fun. And they said, yeah, but they're killing those little animals. And I said, what are you talking about? They said, there's goldfish in those bags. I thought they were water balloons. So I made a mental note. I told the VIPs folks, be sure to tell Chief Gregory. In the, in the days they're following, a number of other folks weighed in about, this isn't right. We shouldn't be allowing this to happen to any little animal. And so we, we talked about it at the July Animal Care and Control Commission meeting. It wasn't an agenda item. So the group said, we'd like to make it an agenda item for the October meeting, which we did. And during that meeting unanimously, the Animal Care and Control Commission made a recommendation to the city council, which I brought back to the city council. The council unanimously said, yeah, we want to take the recommendation of the commission, and let's have the city attorney do an ordinance. Tom got the stuff, said he'd have it about the end of the year. We looked at it again at the January Animal Care and Control Commission meeting. And the Animal Care and Control Commission unanimously approved the language that Mr. O'Neill had provided. My point is, is that there wasn't any rush to judgment about this. This conversation started last May and continues here February 6, 7, what's today? February 6? February 6 of 2020. We're just trying to do the right thing.
But then, the only concern was too, because we were never made aware that this, this conversation was being, you know, I was asked about, I said, the only thing that we had complaints about during festival week were the iguanas.
Yeah.
That was, that was the cause that came into the strawberry office, was just the iguanas. And, you know, and I did have a problem because cold weather's not iguana weather.
Yeah. Did you, Sandra, did you report that to anybody within the city?
Yes. Yeah, we, yeah, we reported, you know, that they, you know, the people were complaining about the iguanas at the carnival, you know. So, you know.
Some of which we were told were released down by the Buchanan River. Anyway.
Yeah. But that, you know, I got you. Yeah. So we, but that was our only concern, you know.
The other thing that I told Shane, this only applies to the games of chance kind of a thing. If this same vendor wants to sell the goldfish for a buck or two a pop or the hermit crabs, that's fine. We're not, we're not prohibiting the sale of any of these animals. It's just folks that end up getting them that don't want them, and then they do something kind of savage.
Don't play the games.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, Randy Sanders has a theory on playing the game. You want to see, open it up to the rest of the council.
You know, I know that one of the concerns was it could hurt the financial success of the carnival and the festival. And I just feel that, that when people come to the carnival, they have a designated amount of money they're going to spend. I mean, it's, they waited for this, they've saved for it in some instances and so forth. I just feel like they're going to spend that money. They're not, they're not going to say, well, I'm taking 20 bucks home because I can't get a goldfish. You know, they're gonna, in some one way, shape, or form, they're going to spend that money while they're on the carnival grounds. And, you know, I don't think it's going to hurt the financial aspects of the carnival because of that thought.
Well, and if Shane Turner comes back and says, hey, that animal thing's going to cost you guys 500 bucks this year. You should put in an extra $500 request, because it's budget month this upcoming month. We'll, you know, I mean, it's, I think, I think we can strike a balance to continue to support you financially and the other ways.
But, yeah, you know, I mean, that was just, you know, the just, the board's concerns about, you know, how, you know, that we were not really aware that anything was being discussed about it, you know. And like I said, I think if the three groups would have sat down, I think we could have settled it without an ordinance.
We have a. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta respond to that. I had a conversation with, I don't know if it was you or your predecessor.
It wasn't me.
Well, then it was your predecessor last summer about this whole issue, and told her that this ordinance was being discussed and percolated. So the whole, this, the idea that the city has done this without notifying the board at all is just not so.
Well, that, that information was never passed and went to the board. Because you can ask, we got three board members here, you know, and none of us, you know, were aware of it.
Whoever you talked to did not tell us anything.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, that's a different issue then.
Yeah.
That's not the city fan of the community.
We, we 100%. Where would we be? It'd be like taking Wesley and Collins out of our mix. I mean, we can't, we gotta have our festival, and we gotta help you guys be successful in what you do.
And you are.
And we don't, we don't think this little glitch is going to be that harmful. And if it is, we'll, we'll help make it right. But, and Shane pointed like to me, he still would prefer for us not to do the ordinance. And he said, I'll, I'll live with whatever you do. So, anyway. We'll, and we'll get together soon and figure out. You'll have your letter to us soon as to what you would like us to help with.
Yes, I have it ready for Monday's or Tuesday's meeting, the consolidated board, and then it'll be good.
Super. Sooner we can get it, sooner we can figure out what we need to do to help.
I was finishing up today, so I'll get it to you down here tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sandra.
Thank you.
We appreciate all the joy you've been here. Okay.
The other board members.
Alyssa Mills has to address council on, you want to say anything else? I didn't mean to go on and on about it, but.
I was sitting doing some additional research. I had a few things going on, so I half the time don't remember bringing my notes. But it's not just Uptown County doing this. I just looked online briefly. There are 10 different states that the whole state has done this, where no games of chance can award anything that's living and breathing. It starts with goldfish. And then maybe they'll add, in many cases, they've added ducks or baby chickens. They've added turtles, iguanas. And if y'all have ever seen what an iguana can do, when they get some size to them, and even before they get any size to them, the bites they can inflict, I've never met a creature other than a spider that I wouldn't, you know, handle or have as a pet. But seeing the bites that can be inflicted by these things, plus the fact that they can carry salmonella, those are two very serious concerns. The other problem was that in some states, they found that after that had worked for a while, more and more exotic reptiles were starting to show up. Now, the twisted side of me would find it rather amusing if Pam Capery's grandchildren were to go to the carnival and win a baby snake and bring it home for Pam to see. Because I know what happens when she sees one. But on a serious note, that wouldn't be funny for anybody. I mean, those things, depending on the type it is, can grow 16, 17 feet. There are stories about them being turned out when they get too big to be taken care of. They're turning up in parks and rivers and alligators. They've also been known to give out alligators. They found one of those, I think it was either in Fairmont or Morgantown last year. So, you know, it may sound like, well, it's just a goldfish. No, it's not just a goldfish. That kind of opens the door, and the things just keep getting bigger. I saw a carnival one time, and it was not gamble. I will say now that Ted and Shane run probably the cleanest and most professional carnival that I've ever encountered in my life anywhere. This was a fly-by-night group. They were giving out bunnies. The bunnies were starved almost to death. They were being horribly treated. And I just can't understand why people would want to take, if I had kids, I would not take my children where they could see animals being neglected or abused. I think if anything, you're going to find that once people find out that their kids, because some people don't take their kids. They give them 20 or 30 bucks and say, go have fun. You'll be home by this time. Well, they don't want their kids coming home going, look what I've got! And I think if anything, this might help the carnival take in maybe even more money. Because now the parents don't have to worry about what little Johnny or Suzie or whomever's going to bring home.
Thanks, Alyssa.
No problem. Thank you.
Denise Weaver with the ASPCA is here also. Ms. Weaver, did you want to address council about this?
I'm sorry. Not really, no.
It's all been said?
Yeah, Alyssa pretty much covered.
Okay. So if there's no other guests that want to speak on tonight, or council, you have, we'll have some discussion among council now. Now's the time to be heard.
Well, I think Alyssa was reading my mind, because I researched, and I was, you know, the fish really don't bother me, because they've done that for years. The crabs, you know, they're little. But when, and the iguanas can't carry salmonella, and sometimes botulism.
Little turtle.
Yeah. And the bites, like she said, bites can, can be very disfiguring to a child. They get bitten the face, because they will get bigger. And she hit right on the nail when I, next thing I was going to say, next thing you're going to have is baby snakes handing those out. So, you know, so that's, that's what.
Or perhaps for the mayor, his grandchildren could bring home a possum.
Yeah.
Yeah. Could restart the awards again.
You haven't given out many often.
Start getting the itches again.
Yeah, they've given out the fish for years and years. And so personally, I don't care about them giving the fish or the little crabs out. But when it comes to iguanas and the things getting bigger and bigger, and, and.
I think it's just a shame that we even have to sit here and have this conversation. I mean, you know.
Exactly.
I've gone, I've been to every single strawberry festival over my entire life. So that's, 30 strawberry festivals, about to be 31. And I've won I don't know how many goldfish over the course of my, you know, youth. And a lot of my friends did. And it just, it just seems like a shame that we have to, that now in 2020, we have to have a conversation about, you know, banning this, because, you know, some kids abuse the gift of the fish. I do want to thank the strawberry festival for coming forward and sharing their concerns tonight. You know, we, the way we continue to build community is to, you know, is to hear from all angles. And we don't know, we don't know what's going on unless folks come to us to, to have conversation. So if there's concern, it's important that they come. And so I appreciate the letter, and appreciate them coming and speaking with us tonight. But I just overall think it's, you know, it's really a darn shame that we, we have to spend time talking about this when, you know, there's bigger fish to fry.
And not stomp.
He said that.
That's right.
Carry that.
Robbie, and not stomp.
And not stomp. That's right. That's right. Catch and release.
Okay, Robbie, I want to say something.
Okay.
There's a flip coin to this, okay? Not everybody does it because they want a fish or whatever. It's cruel. It's a fish, it's a turtle, a snake, I don't care what it is, okay? It's cruel. And what are these parents letting their children do that? Stomp them, scam them, slam them against the wall? It's cruel. And what are their children learning from that?
It's also indicative of the situation.
They learn most of it, children learn from whoever's taking care of them and teaching them, loving them, supposedly loving them and teaching them. But that's, it's just not right. So that's all I'm going to say.
Anybody else? We have a motion and a second on the table. If there's not any further discussion, I'm going to call for a question on the second and final reading of ordinance 441. All those in favor of the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The minutes reflect that the motion carried unanimously. Tom, you're up again, old buddy. It's ordinance 442.
This one's a little more straightforward.
Thanks, ladies. Be sure to get us that list, Sandra.
Yeah, I'll have it in tomorrow.
We'll help you, help you get where you're going.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ordinance number 442 of the City of Buchanan, amending, modifying, and reenacting ordinance numbers 300, 397, and 412 of the City of Buchanan, known cited and referred to as the Buchanan Animal Care and Control Ordinance. This is the second of two readings. This ordinance changes the membership of the Animal Care and Control Commission to remove the ex officio seat of a veterinarian practicing, or I'm sorry, some ex officio seat. The seat designated for a practicing veterinarian and designates that instead as an at-large member of the community. That's the, that is the ordinance.
I would entertain a motion that we approve on second and final reading ordinance number 442 of the City of Buchanan. I have a motion by Mr. Sanders, a second by Mrs. Alba. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And here's a teaser. Since this will go into effect in 30 days, Lisa Critfield, who has been the chair of our dog park committee of recent, of course, worked with Robin and Alyssa and others, I think she would be a stupendous person to add to our mix. Would you endorse that?
Absolutely.
Super. All right. So we won't, we can't do that tonight. It's not official yet, but on down the pipe plan on entertaining Lisa as a new member of the commission. F3 is a zoning change request. Property owner A and T Enterprises on the Brushy Fork Road, and Mr. Aaron Harris is here. He may want to speak to this about what we're going to do. The request is being made. You remember Aaron came last spring, teased us with acquiring some property from the Development Authority, and that recently occurred. And now we have to modify the way the property is zoned from the military zone to accomplish his purposes, because you're breaking ground, right? And you don't want to wait until you're ready to open to say, oh, now we got to rezone, right? So that's what this is about. Tom, did you want to say anything about this? We had had some conversation during the past couple of weeks about it. I'll defer to you.
The only thing I'd say is now that we have the, now that we have the request form and the, and the fee, the council's action tonight would be refer this to planning commission for their approval.
Yeah, it's got to be heard by the planning commission. And then they recommend to the council, and then we can.
It's a free reading.
It's a two to three month kind of a jump through hoops. So the nature of the beast. So is it your recommendation that we proceed in that fashion? And you heard Mr. O'Neill's recommendation. Aaron, did you want to say anything about this, other than just try to get us to do this as quickly as we can? All right, council, I'd entertain a motion that we undertake the referral to the planning commission relative to F3. So moved. I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. Can I have a second to his motion? I think I heard Mrs. Alba. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. Oh, Mrs. Alba.
I should have asked a question before I got to it. When would the planning commission meet again?
I think we've already tentatively in anticipation that we would approve this tonight. I think we've already picked a date that they will be notified about here in the next month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. They had, I think they had to have 15 days notice or something like that, as we've worked into the legal notice and the whole deal.
All right.
Any other discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And similarly, there's a zoning change request by the Upshur County Development Authority to change from the military district to the industrial district. This should be the same drill. We would have to refer it to the planning commission. I thought I saw Rob Benton. See, oh, there, see, I'm looking back there by Aaron. Did you want to say anything about this? It's the same kind of, you just want the planning commission to act as quickly as possible.
Real quick, because I don't want to hurt your speech.
Sure.
You see me cutting my eyes up, right?
I know. But just this morning, I went to county commission and made a presentation. I won't make the presentation here tonight, because, in the essence of time. But there is a medical cannabis manufacturing facility that is looking to locate in Brushy Fork property. And they have to go through the state to get a permit in order to be permitted to operate as a business in the state of West Virginia. There's only 10 permits that are going to be granted. But we do have three businesses that are interested in locating in Upshur County or the City of Buchanan, two of which might end up in the City of Buchanan if they're granted a permit. So one of the things I would like to ask, respectfully request from the city, is the same that I requested this morning to the commission, something that would speak volumes to these companies, as well as assist with, with the review board as they review the permits, is that the city would offer letters of support, acknowledging that the city is open for business for these types of businesses, and encourages them to continue to locate in here and bring the jobs. Just to give you an idea, one of the companies has a pay rate that starts at $20 an hour and average pay $65,000 a year. So those kind of wages change the lives of a lot of people. Upwards of 100 jobs being created within three years, just with one company. So there's a tremendous amount of impact. As I stated at the county commission meeting this morning, obviously, this industry has some conflicts in morality and ethical, you know, individuals having a moral conflict with this industry. However, the state did legalize it. We can benefit from the jobs associated to the manufacturing of it. And if we're on that end of it, we're in a really good spot as a community. So keep it brief and short, but that's what I have. And I can answer any questions that you guys have.
We can't act on the letter tonight, but I can put it on the February 20th agenda. And if you can shoot a draft of proposal that would be in that, we could act on it at that juncture. But we can, we can act on the rezoning and referral to the planning commission in the city.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Have I entertained a motion here? I don't think I have one.
Sure, I'll second.
You'll second it?
I'll motion.
Skinner's making the motion, and Alba is seconding it. Is there any, okay, is there any discussion on the motion to refer to the planning commission for consideration of rezoning the property of the Upshur County Development Authority from military district to industrial district? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Upshur County Commission Resolution to allocate $15,000 to the Buchanan for fire response within the first due service area. Mr. O'Neill, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, we've discussed this issue previously at council's request. I made a request to the county commission to reword the resolution, so that it would not potentially hamstring the city's ability to implement a first due fire fee at some point in the future, if the city were to decide to do that and go and engage in the process to do that. The county commission declined to modify the language of their resolution. My recommendation to the council is to authorize me to decline the appropriation.
Just to be clear, and not to beat the worn out whatever, so many communities around us have already adopted the first due fire fee with great success, which has led to great success for their fire departments. Elkhorn, Bridgeport, Fairmont, Morgantown, maybe as many cities as not have adopted first due fire fees. We don't want to fall behind our sister cities around us. And one of the things that Buchanan will consider in the future to help our fire department get to where it needs to be with vehicles and training and all those other expenses that are incurred as part of running a fire department. Remember that 80-plus percent of all fire calls in all of Upshur County are handled by the Buchanan Fire Department. And 90% of the total value of all buildings and structures in Upshur County are located in Buchanan's first due fire fee. Thus the reason we want to be vigilant in protecting our first due fire fee, or fire area. Because if there is a fee, we want to realize that revenue. So that's what is driving this. I don't think that we should be handcuffed in our opportunity to consider that fee in the future. We want to leave all of our options open. I don't know that anything's coming down the pipe in the next two weeks or the next two months. It might be two years or longer. But we want to be able to exercise that option if we such is, without interference from the county commission. So I would entertain a motion that we permit Mr. O'Neill to respectfully decline the $15,000 that the county commission is offering. If they want to make a gift and give us a check, we'll be happy to accept it. But we're not going to take it with strings attached. I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner and a second by Mrs. Buckloo. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Takes us down to comments and announcements. Mrs. Alba, what do you have for us?
Nothing.
Wow, good.
I've been here since four.
Mrs. Buckloo.
If we're going to do this as a, as steady, we're going to get some commerce there.
I don't know if Ambie's, Ambie's got any.
Do you have the money to do?
Secret funds for us?
Go to the chamber dinners.
Chamber dinners.
Well.
I won't be here, Abby.
No, the problem is, I ran upon a slight issue with the commission in checking into something else, that I asked point blank, are we allowed to buy dinners for chamber meetings? They said, you can be members of chambers, but you cannot buy the dinners for.
So Ambie can, but we can't.
So we're going to have to take up a collection.
But we can have a city table. We didn't have to pay your 25 bucks.
Yes.
Well, we need to discuss.
I'll pitch it.
Yeah. You want to, you want to put that on the agenda for February 20th, or talk about it in advance?
Sure.
Okay, we'll talk about it. I'm good for paying for my own meal.
Me too.
Yeah, me too.
Anything else, Pam?
I said, what anything? If I was here. I think it's a good thing that we did pass the ordinance about the animals, because it's going to get out in the public.
I agree.
Do what? About the animal ordinance.
She's happy we passed it.
Oh, you're lucky.
Mr. Ryland, what do you have for us?
I'm good.
Wow. Mr. Skinner?
I'm with Mary.
Um, no, I'm good too.
Hey. Mr. Thomas, what do you got for us down there? What are you talking about tonight? Mr. Sanders, you going to like read the state of the city as you're supposed to?
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, I thought you wanted me to do that. Just make sure we can unite, you know, the common audience.
I honestly.
We put a lot of jokes on that tonight, didn't we?
I don't, I don't think I have any.
Maybe I thought you.
Must be something, must be something.
Something good on TV. It comes by.
I'd entertain a motion at 8:03. We adjourn. I have a motion, a second to the motion. We're out of here. See you all.